Recording in progress.
The meeting schedule at set time for regular meetings.
So.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Any discussion? Otherwise, all those, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hands. Any opposed? Right, is unanimous. All right, moving on to. Item eight, rules of procedure. We traditionally have our outline, rules, procedures, starting on page four through page six. But otherwise, we utilize Robert's Rules of Order for conducting our business. I would entertain a motion to approve the rules and procedures that were amended on January 26, 2024, as laid out.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Atentions? That is unanimous. Moving on to item number nine, proclamations and presentations. We do actually have a presentation that we will need to add to the agenda.
No, I, you got it.
Okay.
I was gonna say, we'll have to add it because it came in after we put none.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to add a proclamation celebrating the town resident Annie Obera's hundredth birthday to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we amend today's agenda to add a proclamation recognizing the one hundredth birthday of Annie Obera.
Second, if I, by Councilor Nuccio. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right, that is unanimous. I don't see any opposed. Atentions, that is unanimous. So. Proclamation celebrating Tom resident Annie Obera's hundredth birthday. Whereas October 31st, 2021 marks the hundredth birthday of Annie Obera, a town resident for about 60 years. And whereas Dorothy was born in Torrenton, Connecticut. And whereas Dorothy and her husband Henry built their home in 1963 and lovingly raised three children. And whereas Dorothy worked at UConn for 21 years as the one and only bookkeeper. And whereas Dorothy is a huge UConn girls' basketball fan and hasn't missed a game. And whereas Dorothy is loved and cherished by her family and friends and has eight grandchildren. Now therefore, be resolved by the Town Council, together with her family and friends and the entire community, hereby joyfully celebrates October 30th, 2021, hundredth birthday of Annie Obera. We offer her the warmest wishes for happiness and thank her with sincere appreciation for the contribution she has made to this community. David Tom, Connecticut, this the ninth day of November 2021. Town Council, signed Steve Jones, Council Chairperson. If you would like, we can actually have, if you'd like to wheel up in front of the town insignia, we can get your picture of you both together, if you'd like. Yeah. So, if you'd like me to hold. Once you get the picture of the town insignia, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday, Mom.
Happy birthday.
Sure.
Sure. We'll move this back a little bit further and we'll get us all so you can be right dead center.
They're all smiling.
All right, thank you.
And when we came to this town, it was dirt roasts everywhere.
You, happy birthday.
Yes, you will as well.
As many pictures as you want.
Yeah.
This is your time right now.
Yep.
Oh, hell.
Take your time, don't rush.
Your proclamation. I know she's gonna yell at you for this.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you. We're honored to celebrate your birthday. And here is a protective. Yeah, no, you can keep it as is because in case you need to keep it. Okay, 31st, I did say that, yeah, it is on these, yeah, sorry, I may have, I may have slipped it first.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, okay, well, thank you. Yeah.
Welcome to that for now, we'll be touching, we'll put into. You feel like you're.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Actually, before we all get settled, if everyone will be okay, just taking a quick photo of the council in front of the insignia. Yeah.
My town won't listen to that. My guy, that one is.
And if you can turn your body, see, I mean, like, like, so that you're behind Brenda, and so, yeah, that's good.
Be close, Sam.
A lot, yeah, a lot, yeah, well. Go, Talon. I want to go.
Ready? I do. The whole method on. One more of this one. Here's the image. Make sure I got it.
You gotta make sure that the owl in behind there. All right. Thank you all for that. Moving on to item number 10. Public conditions, communications, and public participation on any subject of the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. You can signify by raising your hand in the Zoom chat function. Otherwise, if you're in the audience, you can approach the table in front of us and state your name and address, and it is a two-minute limit. Or if you are on a phone, it is star nine.
Sophia was first.
Okay, Sophia Johnson?
Yes, good evening and congratulations to all, on congratulations to our new chairperson, Stephen Jones. I know that you are a Tallander and you'll do your best to serve the community. My question is, is that our recent election has determined that council members Nukio and Khan receive the highest number of votes. Nukio at 2,135 and Khan at 1,916. And I guess I'm just asking if it wouldn't be, wouldn't it be most prudent to appoint the chairperson and chair, vice chair with respect to the highest number of votes? I don't know if that's something that has ever been done or the policy behind how those seats are selected. Or if in the least with having Nukio and Jones reelected to have them in their respective roles and retained in that way. So I just wanted to just get some clarification with what is the rationale for selecting the current appointments? I please, Councilmember Jones, no disrespect to your being the chair, but I just wanted to understand the rationale behind making the choices that don't reflect the popular vote of 2,135 for Nukio and 1,916 for Khan as chair and vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sophia Johnson, 48, Crystal Lake Road, if I haven't stated that previously. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Next, we have Reenie Bissaw.
Hi, Reenie Bissaw, 230 Grant Hill Road, Tallinn. I would just like to ask that the council continue to pursue and come to a decision around the turf field at the high school. It's a very expensive operation. There has been no monies put aside to take care of that. And I don't want to see there be an $800,000 to a million dollar bill come due in a couple of years when that needs to be resurfaced. And it's not something that has a life expectancy that's long enough to bond for. So I feel it's the town council's responsibility to make a plan for that and decide on a plan of action. Thank you.
Thank you, Reenie. And next, it looks like we have Christina Plord.
Hi, everyone. Christina Plord, 101 Metcalf Road. Congratulations to all. I just would like to second what Reenie said about the turf field as a private resident and not as a Tallinn BOE member. I think it's important that on the BOE side, I think we can address that there. I also would like to advocate with the increase in vaccinations and the low hospitalization rate to remove masks from the town hall setting. And that is it. Congratulations all. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. And Lisa Burns?
Hi, Lisa Burns, 214 Slater Road. I just wanted to come up and congratulate you all. It's wonderful to see, you know, new faces and people who have served on this board, Town Council before. I know it's a tremendous sacrifice that you all make from families and friends to be here. And I want you to know that it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you very much, and I wish you all good luck in the next couple of years. Look forward to it.
Thank you. There's no one else with their hand raised at this time?
Can we just double check, because last time I put people's hands down.
I, I think they just haven't. So if anyone is, unless looking to speak a second time. Kenny Trice, raise their hand.
Good evening. Kenny Trice, 53, Doe Run. I'm simply going to say congratulations to everyone and work as a team. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. There's no one else in the audience or on Zoom? We'll move on to item number 11, public hearing, consideration of a resolution to amend the code of Town Hall, Chapter 112, Park and Recreation, subsection 112. Congratulations. Interim Manager Hancock, if you'd like to write a summary?
Sure. This evening, I also have our town attorney, Richard Riff Conti, with us. And he's up on, on Zoom. And this is a resolution to change the ordinance or to amend the ordinance where we currently have certain restrictions in our plans. This is now to include any sort of cannabis or marijuana. Authority for, for not smoking and to post those policies within our. We currently have certain policies posted, but we never formally had a no-smoking policy included in this ordinance. So this amends the ordinance to now not allow cannabis, edibles, any sort of marijuana, as well as cigarette smoking or any type of smoking. I took, I wrote the draft of the policy amendments and then our town attorney made some changes to some of that, so he is here to really comment on any specific changes that you'd like to discuss within this.
Thank you. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
This is Brenda Felucia. I make that motion.
All right, motion made by Councilor Felucia, seconded by Councilor Nuccio. All those in favor, or does any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, if you can signify by raising your hand. All right, seeing none, it is unanimous. I don't see any names or extensions, so the public hearing is open. If anyone in the audience, online or in person, would like to speak on the public hearings, please signify by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom. Star nine, if you're on a phone, or if you're in person, you can approach the table in front of us with your name and address. See, Liz Costa.
Hi, Liz Costa, 54, Josiah Lane. I understand the ordinance. I understand the purpose of the ordinance. I just questioned edibles. It's not easy to determine whether somebody's eating it or eating an edible or eating a brownie, and I would just question that. Thank you.
Thank you. While we're still discussing it, and the public hearing is open, would Rick Conti or at least would you explain why we incorporated edibles into the, into the language?
Rick, do you want to go ahead and?
Well, I'm here. That was included in the draft that first came to me. It struck me that what was desired was no marijuana or cannabis-type products, whether they were smoked or eaten. And I thought that's what was wanted. This entire new statute allowing marijuana in Connecticut is much more difficult to enforce than the laws were before. And I, I think the comment may address that issue. It is going to be difficult to enforce. Nonetheless, it was my understanding that that's what the council wanted. And that's why we put it in there.
Thank you, Rick. Liz Costa, your hand is raised again. Just want to, for anyone to speak again.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Conti. I appreciate that. I fully support this, especially from the smoking aspect. And having been in a park in Amsterdam and taken my children out of the park in Amsterdam after half hour because of the amount of smoke. I don't agree, however, with edibles. It's, there's no harm to that whatsoever, and I do think it's difficult to enforce, so just would suggest that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, either in the audience or on Zoom, that would like to participate? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public participation portion of the public hearing.
Luba will make the motion.
Brenda Felucia, second.
Motion made by Councilor Luba, it's like, by Councilor Felucia, all those in favor, if you can signify by raising your hand. All those in favor, yes. No opposed, no extensions, that is unanimous. Is any further discussion? Counselors, any questions? Yes.
Me first?
Yeah, Councilor Nuccio, you've been recognized.
Quick question, Rick, if you have a, if you can help me understand, I'm looking at the cannabis definition. And the line, one, two, three, four, five, it says, but shall not include the mature stalks of the plant fiber produced, et cetera, et cetera. Is that because it's cannabis? And is it then, I'm looking to see, it, it looks like it, is it then recognized down in marijuana?
So you're looking at the definition section under 112-2?
Correct, as defined by the CGA statute, 218240, line.
Yeah, so when the, the draft first came from Lisa, she was working with a draft which I believe was originally enacted by the town of Glastonbury. And when we took a look at the draft, the first thing we did was take a look at the definition section and compare them to the way cannabis-type substance and marijuana was defined in the Connecticut general statutes. And for purposes of enforcement, I thought that they should not have been combined like they were in Glastonbury, but rather singled out. And so we copied the definitions exactly as they are in the Connecticut general statutes. And I can't tell, I can't answer your question why that's there. All I can tell you is that's the way the Connecticut general statutes have defined them.
I know more. I, I thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, Councilor Luba.
Just one of the comments, I know that Ms. Costa had questioned having edibles on this list. I think that it would be consistent because we also ban alcohol from being possessed inside the parks and that it would be, it serves as the same as an intoxicant. It's just as difficult to sort of, you know, you'd have to go up and actually take a look at what's inside the company to determine if it's alcohol or not. And with brownies, it might be a little bit more difficult, but I think it's consistent with one another. And I would ask that everybody fully support this, this proposed change. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're quite welcome. Councilor Felucia?
Yes, I'm going to agree that my concern is, is not the consumption of the edibles, it's what gets left behind. I'm afraid that by accident, someone might leave partially consumed package behind, and a child may come across these and not be able to differentiate. So that's where my concern is. And then this way, whoever was irresponsible in that way, they can have some onus on them for that action. I'd like to ask about the park definition. And Parker Place. Basically, the park definition says all other properties, or all properties for the town of Tallinn, does that include Parker Place? Because I believe that property is owned by Tallinn, but leased by them. I know that section 112-10 says that the town manager, I believe, can, can designate areas where like smoking and maybe cannabis use is acceptable. And I want to make sure that we're not making it so that some residents cannot consume something that is legal in their own residence. Did you get that? Do you understand that?
Yeah, no, thank you.
So I for that, you know, Parker Place or any other residence area that's leased from town, that's town property, that they can go ahead and enjoy the same benefits as everybody else in the community.
Okay, so Lisa, if you're able to answer or.
Sure, I think between Rick and I, we can, we can take this one on. You raise a very good point about Parker Place. Certainly, that is, is a leased area, as well as some of the museums and such in town as well. Rick, would you recommend possibly? I, I wouldn't say in any of the museums anyway, because there's no smoking or anything in any.
But we don't.
Building.
Correct, but we don't have anything about cannabis for those properties.
Right. What, what I'm saying is, could there possibly be an exclusion for Parker Place regarding the legality of cannabis in those areas, because that is people's home? I think the state statute does, and I'll, I'll let you all pipe in in a second. Does say that you cannot withhold anyone from being able to consume it in their own home. The, the other properties aren't people's homes, but Parker Place certainly is. That, that was one thing, and then I can, after they want to share, I will talk to you about the other part where the allowance for smoking, because there's definitely no cannabis law, but we'll talk about.
So is it, is it, Rick, you want to respond?
Well, Rick, what, what is your recommendation on that? And then there's two counselors here who also want to ask.
Sure, so I'm gonna have to start by pleading ignorance and tell you that I don't know what Parker Place is.
Parker Place is the old Parker School where our recreation building is also adjacent to.
I, okay.
Out the old Parker School to the access for elderly.
Now I understand.
So.
Yeah, now I understand. Thank you for clarifying that. So that certainly would be property that's owned by the town. And obviously, it is a residence, and I would think that the private residences should be excluded from that. And if you would want me to amend the definition of park in this ordinance, I'd be happy to work on that.
Councilor Nuccio?
I'm not necessarily sure. You'd have to amend the part about park, Rick, but I'm questioning on the 1210 designation of the smoking and tobacco use in certain areas and events. Says the section, as to recreation areas reserved for exclusive use or leased by the town. So could the Parker Place fall under that? And we could just say that it's a leased property and exempt it from like the 1210 piece?
Absolutely, yes. I think 11210 would allow the manager to say Parker Place was excluded from this.
However, that, that section strictly prohibits the use of cannabis. It just gives the town manager pretty much the authority to allow for smoking in designated areas, but cannabis is strictly prohibited in, in any of those areas. So I think we would definitely put an exemption under the definition of park to do that, or add to this section that says if any of the the town manager has the authority to allow cannabis only in residential leased town buildings, something to that effect. Certainly up to the council how they'd like to change that.
Councilor Luba? I'm sorry, actually, you know, Councilor Nuccio.
Just to follow up on that, though, this ordinance is about parks and recreation areas, and Parker Place is neither. It's, but it is a town-owned building. So this ordinance is specifically about parks and recreational areas. So I don't know, is town, I didn't, other than that section, that last 1210, I don't see that we're talking about town buildings.
Just in the definition of parks. So that's where we, we have to make sure that there's some sort of language that excludes that, just so we're being.
Do we have something currently that talks about smoking in town buildings?
No, it's covered by state statute, state statute. Any type of municipal property, state property, there is no smoking. And, and so that, we fall under the state statute regarding that area. So when I reviewed this particular ordinance, I realized that I think some of our signs may have said no smoking, but we don't have. So while I was amending it, I included the language regarding smoking as well. So.
So in this case, can we just instead amend the, like, take out the town building part of the parks?
We, we would want to leave town buildings in because there are other recreational-type town buildings. You could consider the senior center a recreation, a recreational-type building. We have the, the recreation center, which is a recreational-type building. So you certainly wouldn't want it, even though state statute would cover that as well.
Right, state would exempt that, right.
For cigarette smoking, we, we certainly want to make sure we cover it. Um, for cigarette smoking, we certainly want to make sure we cover it and Councilor Loba, I, I think you've been wanting to.
Well, I'll wait, I mean, I know.
I didn't know if you wanted to add to what you're saying.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Yes, I, I would agree a hundred percent with, with Hancock that. Well, I think the best way to approach it is continue on with under. We already have an exclusion built in. They were saying excluded from coverage here and our lands under the delegate of the Talent Conservation Commission. You could also include inside there and any other leased or other properties designated for, for residential purposes as determined by the town manager. That way it gives us the ability where if it's something that is, is a lease or see if there's other properties that come up that we end up turning into leased properties, that we can include them underneath it. So I think that that's the best way to do it is exclude it under the definition of parks, specifically saying any, any properties that are leased or otherwise rented as residential properties under the discretion of the town manager. And adding that in there, and I think that would suffice, but through, through you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Catty, what are your opinion on that?
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I'd also add a comment too about Parker Place. Now that you're raising that issue, there's been an ongoing issue with smoking there. And the landlord has been trying to enforce that. There's been a lot of complaints by tenants who are there, of other tenants who have been smoking. And so I think we have to be mindful of overstepping the lease provisions between the landlord and the individual tenants there as well. If we have to take that into account.
Thank you. So in that case, Rick, do you feel that we should give you more time to review this language and provide additional information and in effect table the public hearing to our next regular meeting?
Yeah, I, I think there's been a number of very interesting comments tonight, and I think that Lisa and I should take another look at this in light of all of that and come back to you with an amended provision.
The chair recognizes Counselor Lucy.
Brenda Lucy here. So do we also need to look at the museums then? I mean, they we just renewed the ten-year lease on them, and I didn't know if we needed to look at the cannabis vaping provisions for each. We need, we would like some input from the people who oversee those properties. I, I, I'm just asking. I'm not saying that we, one way or the other.
My, my opinion would be to prohibit it from any municipal residential. That keeps it consistent and fair across the board as well as going along with the state statutes on the regular smoking concerns as well. But Rick and I can certainly look at the language in there and include something to address the residential areas.
Okay. So in that case, would be best suited to table or postpone the, or table postpone the hearing until the twenty-third and address it at that time or?
Well, I would, I would recommend to postpone it for there's a thing on your agenda this evening to do the twenty-third meeting totally on Zoom. And certainly if you want to allow for more public comment or anything like that, Mike, if people wanted to be in attendance, that would be difficult if you change it to that type of Zoom meeting only for that one particular meeting. So maybe to postpone it for the first meeting in December.
I guess I'll take a, a quick straw poll. If counselors, if they're in favor of that, they could just raise their hands in favor. In that case, then I would entertain a motion to postpone the public hearing to the first regular meeting in December.
Brenda Lucy, I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Name for the discussion? Those who are signified by raising your hand. That is, that is unanimous. So thank you, everyone. That public hearing is postponed until the first meeting of December. Moving on to item twelve, reports of boards and meetings responsible to the council.
I have tourism. They have not had a, a meeting scheduled recently. We're hoping to get one done in December. I, for the talent tourism, social media, I've reached out to a number of businesses to let them know that the Facebook page exists and that they're welcome to post to the page, tag the page, and a number of them are very excited about having that ability. It'll help expand their reach, that it also enable us to get some more followers on the page. So we just hit seven hundred. So that's good. In sustainable CT running, unfortunately I had a doctor's appointment, so I was unable to attend, but I had no updates. And I don't believe there is any other updates from those in attendance at the meeting. There was none.
Okay. There is no other reports of boards committees responsible to the council. We move on to item twelve B, reports of town council liaisons. We will still need to assign some liaisons. I don't know of any of our incumbents who are re-elected, if they've attended any meetings since then. So Counselor Lucy, I recognize you first.
Yes, Planning and zoning had their last meeting last night of their current group. They, this is very interesting. They approved a public hearing for a business that wants to start conversions for electrical vehicles. So they'll be taking vehicles and converting them to electrical. So there's going to be a public hearing coming up. I did break down the date. Hold on. Um, November twenty-second, they will be having a public hearing to receive information about allowing this business to convert to electrical vehicles, which I'm excited about. So, and that was it they had.
Any other counselors?
I don't have anything.
That the words go, we haven't met since last year. Thank you.
Counselor, your vice chair.
W P J didn't meet, so I have to report.
And Counselor, you said.
I had not had any.
I have had none. However, the Conservation Commission will be having their opening ceremony on Saturday, I believe, in one to two P M. And then the Library Foundation and Water Commissioner are having meetings at seven o'clock on Monday, the fifteenth. All right, so moving on to new business, item thirteen point one, a town attorney for term in November ninth, twenty-one, through November seventh, twenty-two. Would you remain, take it away?
So this evening, we still have Rick Conti here. Part of the town charter requires when there is a new election of council members to reappoint or appoint at a town attorney for the, for the term of your election. For your term. So we're bringing forward the recommendation to reapprove and reappoint town attorney Rick Conti. And he is here for discussion as well as a background that's included. Certainly it's up to your purview as to what you would like to do.
Is there any discussion from council members? Any questions for, for Rick Conti? All right, seeing that I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of the town attorney for the term as laid out in thirteen point one.
I like that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Chair recognizes it was unanimous.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you all. I appreciate your support.
Get to work.
Goodbye.
Bye, Rick.
So tonight was free, right? There's no charge.
I know, right? It was in flux.
Goodbye.
Thirteen point two, consideration and action on approving the project's grant manager job description.
Okay, this position was approved in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget process. But we had put it in as a phased-in approach to begin January first. What we needed to do was to create a job description, so I included myself, Mike Wilkinson, as well as Bev Bellotti, because she certainly played a major role involved in project management for the town as well as grants administration. And so we, we all put in what we felt the job description should include. And I will also let Mike Wilkinson discuss it in a second. So we'd like to get this approved this evening so we can move forward with getting the position advertised to try to get someone on board by the beginning of the year. Certainly with all these grants that are out there, the ARC grant, the certain ones that Counselor Nuto sends to me constantly. Just trying to find someone to be able to manage them. If we can have the opportunity to go for all these grants, it certainly would be wonderful, perhaps someone on board. So Mike, I'd like to open it up for you to maybe discuss a little more about this, please. Mike Wilkinson? You got to take off mute.
You're still muted, Mike.
Thanks, Mike Wilkinson, Director of Administrative Services. Congratulations to everyone and welcome the new council members. So some, for those who were on the council, again, this disposition was budgeted in this, this budget at a half a year, so starting January first. Again, one of the issues was that Bev Bellotti does a, a lot of this work right now. And, you know, the, one of the big issues with her position is the ability to transition that at some point. And that's one of the reasons why this was created, along with the fact that there are more and more opportunities for grants. Just, just last week, they, they passed the new infrastructure bill, which actually will include a hundred billion dollars of competitive bids that localities can bid on. So this will, this position will be, could create opportunities at. So, and again, it's, it was developed with Lisa and Bev as an input of what really needed to be looked at down the road as far as grants and also special projects. And not just getting the grants, but also as Bev talks about at many meetings, there is a lot of administration of projects once the grants are, are administered and particularly if they're capital grants. So it's not just getting them, it's also administering them. So that's the goal of the job description, and that's obviously the first step. Once it's approved by the council, then we would start the process to recruit a person and hopefully have them on soon after January first.
I'll open the floor. Any counselors that you have any questions? Counselor Lucy.
Yes, was there any consideration to having any project management skills in the job description or listed? I know there's, there's some mention, but there's not an extensive amount. I know some of these grants rely heavily on project management and other skills.
Certainly.
So, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm fine, that's it.
Yes, we, we did include, I thought we had included the language regarding the project management. We did not require a P M P certification, however, because start requiring that type of certification, your salaries are going to go way up, which certainly we could not pose for talent at this point. But we will be looking at the experience with any candidates who apply. We will be looking at all of that type of experience as well as their experience with grant management. It's a, it's a unique combination. You know, usually you either have someone who's project manager or a grants administrator. So we're, we're trying to do both in one.
Counselor, actually, Counselor Lucy, were you?
I, I think that's it. Thank you.
Looking at the education and experience, I think you have that covered there. Bachelor's with master's degree preferred, redefined, you were worth experience in the public sector with emphasis on grants and project management. Any, the link combination? So I think you kind of have that covered there, right?
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing that I can make a motion to approve. Page for a second there. The project grants manager job description. Is there a second? Motion made by Counselor, I'm seconded by Counselor, you checked. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I think. All in favor, raise your hands. And opposed? Sentence act is unanimous.
Thank you.
Moving on to item thirteen point three, discuss setting a workshop to review or workshops to review television statements and join in on goals and set activities.
What I'd like to make a proposal to maybe set your goals or objectives a little bit differently this year. And certainly it's both, all up to you, but I'd like to make a recommendation or a suggestion. Several years ago, the town worked very hard with community members, staff, and other individuals, counselors, politicians, commissions to work on setting a vision for the town as well as the, the mission statement. What I've included in your packet tonight is a copy of the information that came out of those extensive workshops that developed those statements for the town.
And you can find out on page forty of any counselors that are looking for that.
It's page forty. What I'd like to do is set a workshop to work with all of you together to, first of all, go through the vision statement and identify the goals that are within that statement. Then the next step after doing that is to then look at the different objectives that we want to reach to obtain those various goals. So for example, if you look here, it says the town provides efficient and high-quality services in a fiscally responsible and efficient way. That's one part of it. That's actually a goal. My, my thoughts are to now, what objectives do you want to set to meet that particular goal? And they could change each year. But to try to identify the objectives for that goal and then maybe specific activities under those objectives that we would give us something that's measurable that we can do and, and to go forward. So it's more of a brainstorming environment, which you would have done in the past as well, I'm sure. I think, I hope.
Not all the time.
I was, I apologize, but I was not involved in the last process with all of you. But from my experience in, in doing strategic planning and goal setting, you usually start off with this, then you move down and you take the bigger picture and you start moving into the minute where you get to an activity where you basically say, okay, I'd like to create cost savings by buying in bulk or buying with other communities or something. I'm just trying to think of something off the top of my head. But certainly getting, get down to the strategies of where you, activities of where you'd like to go to achieve what your overall goal is. But then after you get at least a baseline of where you want to head and what you're seeing for the future to reach this vision, I'd like to recommend that we now bring in the people that it impacts. Bring in the staff, if there's any potential staff. Things, things that would affect them, or maybe they could share information that would say, you know, that's a great idea. However, we did this ten years ago. Here's why, or something to that effect. So at least you have some background or some input from the staff side as well as any permissions that may be affected or possibly any public, if you want to have any public input into the process. I certainly would leave that piece up to how you would like to decide to who you would want to include in, in a secondary or third tertiary process to really define your goal. What objectives and strategies that you want to move forward with with total input from everyone who would be involved with it. That is just my. That is just my recommendation that I think would help give a well-rounded approach to the goal setting, but certainly if you want to do it in a different way, you can do it whatever way you'd like.
And I think your proposal was a two-part meeting.
At least a two, depending if you needed more input from other individuals, we could go to a third. But I was hoping to identify at least the first part with the council themselves. And then from there, bring in those who, depending on what you decide upon, bring in on those who would might be affected. Certainly, I can, if you wanted, I could also see if there's any concerns that need addressing from the town side that I could bring forward to you as well. If there's anything from any of the commissions, if you'd like me to do that, certainly, you know, I would like you all to be to vote on it and let me know exactly how you would like me to proceed with that so that I'm going in the right direction with the overall majority's approval.
Appreciate that. So I'll open up to discussion, and I recognize Counselor Lu first, followed by Counselor Tulusi, and I think Counselor Nuccio, if you can hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That, I mean, I think that sounds like a great idea. My concern is that I think that, well, last, having the meeting, because I see that we have it set down for the first meeting, we were planning on the sixteenth, was that the or, no, my, my, I'm sorry. It's got recurring things in that.
I've got so many papers here.
Dates that you set out, I mean, I know that it looked like it was set down for two evenings. And I thought that the way that we did it last, last time, we're having it like a Saturday or Sunday, just one day, and be able to sit there and be able to work through things. I found that was, I found that worked well, rather than having it on an evening where we're coming, you know, we're coming out of a situation where we're trying to get, do goal planning and everything else, where this week could focus solely on it and be able to address the issue at hand and work together on it. That's just my suggestion. I will, again, this is the team and we'll, we'll plan out that whole thing as a team. But I think it's that, I found that to be, that worked well last time. Especially with the way that you're suggesting it about how breaking it down, because that's a little more time intensive. And I think if it's something that, oh, we're there in a more casual situation like we were the last time, that was more conducive to, to us brainstorming and working together in that situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome, Counselor Tulusi.
Thank you. I wanted to give a little bit of history, because Tammy will back me up on this, I'm sure. Two councils ago, what we did was we emailed a group of three people on the, on the town council what each individual counselor's goals and objectives were. Then we took those on each of those goals that each counselor came up with, put it on a piece of paper with no names, and put them into categories, the three of us. And then grouped, sub-grouped those categories and came up with a list. And we got that done in forty-five minutes. This way, it included everybody's goals and objectives. And it was, some of them were little things to get done, some of them were much larger. But it was very effective because then we weren't sitting there and questioning each other's goals and laying them against, you know, other members of the group. Two years ago, what we did is we went to the training center at the fire station and we spent four and a half hours. It was very long, and on top of that, we did not get to everybody's goals on the list. There was a member who never got to present many of their goals and objectives. We were just tired and we stopped. So I think it's much more equitable to do something where everybody can submit and we can group them together and come up with, you know, the goals and objectives that everybody wants to see. Maybe we ask that we each keep it to like between one and three goals or objectives that we want to see by the end. Taking a look at, you know, maybe what we do is we first work on the mission of vision statement, and then we do our individual goals that we think, and go over what a goal is, you know, is it measurable, is it attainable? Things like that. I think that's much more equitable for this group. Instead of, again, weighing people's goals in a group and saying, no, we're not going to do yours, we're going to do these. The other thing is I'm very nervous about having department heads come before us and either present their, excuse me as I throw things, I'm Italian, I top up my hands, present, you know, what their needs are and have to defend them in front of the council. You're the town manager. You're the liaison between all the departments. I think collecting what their needs are and presenting them to us is much more comfortable for everybody than putting someone in the hot seat and peppering them with questions and micromanaging their department. I don't want to see that happen. So, you know, or you give us manager, you know, the town manager's report monthly, you collect information from them. I see no difference in you being able to collect and advocate for the town department heads without putting them on the spot and making them potentially be uncomfortable defending their, their needs for their departments.
I do understand regarding the needs for the departments. But also, there's a, there's a desire by the department heads that I, that I work with that also want to be able to provide input that if a decision is made that's going to impact their operation, that at least the council may still decide, we want to do it, and that's it. And we, we decide you want to do it, we do what we got to do to try to get it done. But we need the council also to understand that there may be some limitations in making certain things happen. And as long as we understand and everyone understands what we may have to do to achieve it, I think the communication has to be there so they don't feel that, all right, you've got to do this and really had no input in the idea or how to get it done.
Okay, one more historical thing. We, we've had, we've gone on field trips. I think those are extremely beneficial. We've been to Public Works, and I know we have a few council members who have not had the opportunity to tour that. That might be an area where they can advocate and you can see their needs. That's much more relaxed and it doesn't put them sitting there with seven people peppering them with, you know, and it's easier for them to be able to, to, you know, show us their needs. We've gone to the fire departments and toward, we've gone to the cemeteries and toward. I'm more comfortable in a relaxed setting like that than in a setting like this. Because even though many department heads might be comfortable, not all might. And again, you're the manager, you should be able to advocate for them and for their needs.
I certainly can. Okay, I'm sorry.
Chair recognizes Counselor Regan, as I give everybody a chance to go first or do a second round of additional councilors. So Counselor Regan and I think Counselor Nuccio next, and then we will go back unless Counselor Uchek or Con.
I might ask the same question.
Yeah, yeah, Counselor Regan.
I agree with some of what Brenda says, and I also agree with a lot of what you said, Lisa. I think there needs to be some interaction, at least with department heads and the town council. I've been told by more than one department head that they sometimes feel like they have no input into what they're doing. And I think if they can sit in front of us and communicate, maybe make it voluntary for them. Maybe they would rather write it down and submit it through you, or maybe they'd like to come and see us face to face. I think, I think offering that option to them would be beneficial. And I like the idea of collecting everybody's thoughts and putting them together and trying to group them out. I think that would save a lot of time. But I think interaction with department heads is important. And I like the idea of the field trips too. I've been on two of them so far with different departments. And to me, that's always a good way to, for, to get to know the department heads and some of the staff and what's going on in their departments.
Counselor Nuccio?
Thank you. So I'm kind of a hot pot too. I like the, I agree with Lou in that having it on a weekend was definitely better because we didn't have work, we didn't have all the other obligations, and we could plan it out and say, we're going to sit at the fire station for the next five hours and we're going to eat and we're going to talk about all this. So I like that personally. I like the idea of everybody kind of coming up, well, first and foremost, to have the meeting, like you said, with the mission statement and the vision, because that should be our guidance. So having a meeting to discuss that. And then if everybody has a couple of things that they want as goals, compiling that list. But in the sense that I did kind of like what Mike did in the sense that we should all sit down and talk about all of those and say, you know, if there's seven of us, and all of us give three, we're talking about twenty-one goals. We had eighteen goals for the last council and we didn't get to all of them. Because, you know, we have to do the business of the town and our goals are like our new things, the things that we want to work with on top of the business of the town, which I think is what you're getting at with the, with the department managers. So if there would be a way to get the feedback, compile it, and then we can focus in on that and say, you know, if your goal is similar to my goal, then we can combine those. If, if we have twenty-one goals, then some of them might have to fall off. We might not be able to do twenty-one goals in two years' time. We were very ambitious with the last town council and I didn't think we got, I think we had seven left that we didn't fully accomplish. We touched a lot of them, but there were some on there that we just didn't get to get to.
Your packets are included.
Yeah, I saw the summary in here. So there was definitely ones that we couldn't get to. So if we can at least combine them, look at what everybody has for goals, and then decide as a council which ones we want to move forward with. In regard to the staff, it's kind of, it's kind of tricky, right? Because I understand what Brenda's saying, I understand what John's saying, I'm looking at this saying, for instance, we had the goal for the Commission with People with Disabilities and the Substance Use, Substance Use and Mental Health Task Force. We knew those were going to have staffing impact, but we tried to create the boards in a way that it was more volunteer, volunteers that were handling the majority of it. So it's hard because sometimes our goals might conflict with what everybody's already doing, and it, it might be something that is additive to their job. So hearing about it is good, but we still need to decide whether or not that's a town council goal that we need to move forward with. So, you know, I'm kind of here or there on that one because we get a lot of opportunity to talk to the department heads with budget and everything else. To me, that's where we hear their needs. Goals is different, I think, than what they need. So that to me is kind of back and forth, I'm not sure.
Could we go for a second round?
I just want to just, I think when I first said to include their needs, what I meant was more so if you set a goal to set up a disability's commission, so you will need some sort of staff support there. The impact on the office, I think what you need to understand is how it impacts the office and what I meant, what needs are, do they need additional staffing, do they need more hours, do they need, what do they need to be able to accomplish your desires or your goals? So that's where, what I mean by their needs is where I was coming from with that. Not basically for them to be asking for new trucks and this and that. That, we do that through the capital process. We do things through the budget process where you hear those needs. But where it's when you're defining certain objectives that need to be obtained, is to be able to hear their input regarding how they can or cannot feel they, feel they may not be able to achieve them unless they have the right tools to make that happen.
Would it be helpful for us when we're doing our, our goals to say, you know, the area we think it's going to impact? So that way, again, there's seven of us. If six of us have goals that are going to impact human services, we clearly can't do six goals that are going to impact that area without addressing.
Always her next.
Right, exactly, right. So without addressing that, we can't have goals that are going to overrun one area. Would it be helpful for us to kind of, either us or you, to say, okay, this goal would impact these areas? So then we can rate and say which is the most important, you know, which, which ones do we really want to focus on or which ones do we wait and see up?
Absolutely. That, that's why I kind of went with, and it doesn't, certainly didn't have to be a weeknight, weekends are fine, for me, they're fine. I was just, that's why I was trying to do it like in two parts, because you work together to try to decide what you want. And then we present to those impacted, you know, if you have any input on this, is how is this going to impact you? Most of them, I would know how it would impact, just with working with them on a daily basis. However, it gives them the opportunity to give that part of the input. But again, that's totally up to all of you, how you want it.
And I think even possibly simultaneously, you might, it might be beneficial to share the vision statement with the department heads and see if they're establishing goals where they might feel certain sections fall in line with them. You know, obviously, economic development was fall probably under planning and development. You know, there's certain areas, you know, encouraging balance among open space, and you know, that would have been fall under conservation. So there's various areas where they could possibly, from a higher level, review what their goals are in the next year and maybe do additional sharing with the council on what they view as their maybe top goals or visions for 2022.
And those we do include with the budget process. That's right in our budget book. So maybe I can focus with them more on the vision statement to kind of reframe.
Exactly. What's more of a goal or vision versus what's kind of a budgetary mood or what's a capital expenditure?
Yeah.
Sorry, now, Counselor, you checked your con, do you want to speak before I go for a second round?
Just real quick, I think Lisa, I'm a little different than what I've been given. I think your idea is great as a new town council member. I do know a lot about the town, but there's a lot of things I need to still learn. I don't want to over-strengthen the town staff, though. But I definitely would love to have an opportunity at least to check with them. Now, with all the departments, would separate might be enough time for all these departments? And then, second, did you also mention including the community in these discussions?
That, that is okay to. That would certainly be up to the overall town council. How would you like, how you would like to do the process? If you want to include public, if you want to include outside boards and commissions? If you wanted to do a survey to get a feel for what some of the community needs are? There's different ways you can gather that information for how you may want to proceed. Also, you have constituents that I'm sure speak with each of you from time to time as to what their feelings are. So it's, it would be as a group, however you would want to move forward with that, we can do.
I would love, I would love a tour of all the facilities. Be careful what you ask for.
That's cool.
We can arrange something. What I can do is if, if you all wouldn't mind, if, if any of you are interested, please reach out to me directly. And I can arrange to try to get a tour, if you can all give me some dates that you're available within the next month. I know you have the holidays coming up, but if you give me a bunch of different dates, I can.
Jason is saying busy until March.
How do I show off comments? That's enough, Jason. But, you know, if you certainly can give me some dates, I, all of, any of you, I could try to coordinate a date with, that everyone might be able to go and we can arrange Public Works facility, firehouses, whatever you'd like to see. And if there's certain, you know, can I see everything or just certain areas? You know, we could, we could try to see what we can accommodate for.
Thank you. Turning to head, Counselor Con, before I go for a second round, I think everyone's spoken session. Are you good? Okay. Counselor Lu, you want to go for a second round?
Oh, no, I mean, I think that we've, we've discussed this, I mean, pretty much some of the issues I was going to bring up is already discussed. I think it's a great plan. I want to go on a road trip with, with coming with your check, so I'm ready for that, so you can sign us up. That, I think that the ideas are great. I think that the, you know, combination of everything here, you've got a lot to do, to work with. So I'll just shut up now. I think, I think that's the best. No, no, I think, but I think that, I think that, you know, that Ms. Hancock has enough of the ideas as far as how to see for, and I think that you've got some great plans already, so.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, the council action was just a discussion, so I think, you know, I have collected fair information, and I think myself. And I think myself and Vice Chair Regan can reach out to Lisa Hancock and have some discussions about format, dates, and then have that reached out to the rest of the council to try and crowdsource amenable times and dates for everyone. I know the holidays and with all the other needs in the coming future might make it tight, but we'll, we'll try to make it work as best we can.
Okay, just let me know when you're ready and we'll go from there.
Just not next weekend.
All right. With that being said, we'll move to item thirteen point four, approval of the November twenty-third, twenty-first town council meeting being held only remotely through Zoom.
This was a recommendation that I brought forward since it is a holiday week and there's still a lot of important things that need to be taken care of. It might be easier for those who may want to attend the meeting as well as councillors to be able to do it in the comfort of their own homes or locations, wherever they may be, if they're on vacation.
Florida.
So there you go. So we don't lose anybody along the way. You know, you think you're on vacation.
It's not the case.
I've I've been there. So I know what it's like. But so I'm asking if that's something you would like to consider to to just put it as a total remote meeting for that one and only meeting?
So moved.
You know better than that, councillor Lucy. So is there any discussion before we uh? In that case, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution as that laid out in thirteen point four.
Councillor Lucy makes the motion.
All right, is there a second?
One second.
All right, second by councillor Khan, which is by councillor Lucy. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, you can raise your hand. Chair recognizes the vote is unanimous. Our next meeting will be fully remote. Moving on to item thirteen point five, would be appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. I would entertain a motion to approve the appointments to vacancies on various boards and commissions as laid out in thirteen point five A to eighteen, thirteen point five B. All right, my down motion. Is there a second?
Second, Deb.
All right, motion made by councillor Regan and second by councillor Meecham. Is there any discussion?
Thank you to all the volunteers.
I second that statement as well. All those in favor, signify by raising your hands. Chair recognizes the unanimous. There is no old business, so we'll move on to item fifteen, report of the interim town managers.
Yeah, I think that's given you a lot to think about tonight. Certainly, as I'm not sure which one of you mentioned, oh, Mike mentioned about the the president's bill regarding the infrastructure bill. And I have not heard if he has signed it yet. Last I heard, they were waiting for him to sign that bill. And once it comes forward, there'll be several opportunities to maybe apply for certain funding. Some of that included road infrastructure, waterline infrastructure, which I know we have some areas to think about there. So there may be some opportunities for us going forward. Oh, just to bring up speed, we, with Storm Isaias, we did close out that FEMA application today and we received, I don't have the exact amount because they made me do it in four or five different applications for different things. But we're certainly getting probably close to fifty, sixty thousand, or it could be more or less, just right around that number. I have to see what they're going to finally approve. But I met with FEMA today and we closed it out and ready to be finalized. So with a storm that we didn't think we were going to get anything, at least we were able to get it. Most of those reimbursements were actually for funds that were expended out of the general fund budget during that time. We never thought we would get reimbursement for anything. And I took a chance with applying for it and and I got it. The funds have been, what we've received so far have been deposited into the Emergency Declaration Fund because that's normally where those type of FEMA funds would go. So that, whatever we get in, will go into there, it'll go into the fund balance, which can be used for any future emergencies that may come our way. We're still working with FEMA on some of the COVID numbers, the COVID applications. That's kind of slowed down as to what we're allowed to apply for anymore. But we still have a little bit of money coming from there to move forward with that as well.
Are there any questions to your councillors regarding managers of work? Councillor Meecham?
Uh, thank you, Lisa. That was, that was informative. I'm glad to hear about the 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 money there from that grant. I have a question regarding, well, first of all, I wanted to say welcome to, we got the new Assistant Director of Human Services starting soon. So that's excellent. I can't wait to see what ideas the the new person has. But my question is around the the talent food bank in the Holiday Care and Share Program. Do you know if there's gonna be anything sent out to people on items that we need to collect? How many we need, like if there's any program and that's gonna be sent out so people know where to bring holiday donations. Thanksgiving is right around the corner. And then also, I know they're gonna do the stuff of the cruiser.
Stuff a cruiser and then we work very closely with the state police to distribute whatever toys and such. Yes, our Director of Human Services, Beverly, as well as Nancy and and the staff within the office are working to communicate those needs. Certainly, town hall employees each year also participate. And we sponsor a family amongst all of us. And we usually do it for Thanksgiving as well as Christmas and usually providing food or food cards, depending on the COVID nature of things these days. Gifts for a certain family that for the season. So that is all communicated about through Human Services Office.
Can we get an e-box on that by chance, like of of where people can donate or what they can donate? Just something that can go out to the public in case people want to bring in gift cards or food or gifts for kids that get closer to the Christmas evening? Because I know the fire department usually does a collection also when the truck comes around, so.
Let me speak to Beverly and
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, for Ms. Hancock. As far as questions regarding on the on the COVID issues and I know the FEMA funding and everything else, where we stand with any, are there any still outstanding like charges, reimbursements, anything else that we're that we're looking for that would be covered under our current declaration of emergency that we that we still need to have have addressed?
At this time, we're things that we're still purchasing are things like PPE, cleaning supplies, things like that. But there's no major staffing doing over and beyond like they were before. There's the normal cleaning processes that are going on. The only thing regarding if if you're kind of leaning towards the declaration of emergency by the town and the town council as such, I'm not sure what else could be coming forward. And since the overall state declaration, I don't think has ended yet as well. I I just don't know what the future holds and if
The current declaration.
Right. And if we, if we remove that declaration of emergency, it may not allow us to get grant funds in the future. So I'm a little hesitant to recommend the removal of that, if that's if that's kind of what you're asking, I'm not sure. But there, you know, there's still some ongoing purchases, nothing as drastic as it was in the beginning with all the partitions that we had to get and, you know, specialized extra heavy-duty cleanings and things like that. That's not happening.
And then again, just to follow up with that, through Mr. Chair, for Ms. Hancock, that if there's any consideration, since the executive order left the discretion of the masks up to you, if there's any consideration or any discussion about moving the mask mandate requirements within town facilities and town specifically to help?
I once again have checked with our health officials and they're saying the CDC guidelines are still to require the use of masks for the time being. Again, today in the news, the state's rate was up three point two percent in positive cases again. I I gotta say, I hate these masks as well. I don't know if you do, but I I don't like them at all. However, just trying to keep some sort of balance and and some sort of at least control for the staff here who will work here and their families as well as all of you. I can't see removing it as of yet, but I do check it on a weekly basis, actually, with our health officials and again, strongly recommend.
Good. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Are there any other councillors that question regarding the reporting from town manager? Seeing none, I would move over to item sixteen, adoption of minutes, and would entertain a motion to approve FEMA that laid out in sixteen point one and sixteen point two. With their motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion, just a point of note for you councillors, even if you were not a member, if you have read them and feel sufficiently able to vote in favor than you can? Otherwise, you are more than willing to abstain if you would rather not vote on the minutes. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Chair recognizes that the vote is unanimous on its seventeen correspondence to council. I know councillor Lucy, I think.
I I took the liberty of going through them. I will tell you, we received many emails concerning the joint meeting that we had with the Talent Green Historic Commission, the Commission with People with Disabilities. We received lots of information about those sidewalks and ADA compliance. I did not count that because there were so many more that came in today. And we also received a couple correspondence about the sweet street sweeper that we had discussed at last time's meeting, and I believe it was answered by our town manager. And that was it for correspondence.
Nothing from Klaus?
Don't we, okay, we we did. On top of it, we did receive a number of ads and other types of emails that are not to do with our business. So I skipped those.
Okay, appreciate the clarification. Moving on to item eighteen, chairperson's report. I don't really quite have one yet, other than to make note of the fact that on December second of twenty twenty-one at six thirty, we all have a special hybrid meeting in regards to talent and research. So I highly encourage the public to participate in that. There is a public participation portion of three-minute limit for residents. There'll be some introduction by Doug Thomas from SGR, who is the consulting firm. I believe from there, we would, after there's a period of time, all residents can often speak for the first time and provide input that then we'd open it up to additional residents if they need to speak a second time or provide any information or thoughts. With that being said, I'm very honored. I appreciate everyone's support, you know, support for the chairmanship and also really appreciate the support for councillor Regan and vice chair. I think we both have a very similar set of temperament and skills that I think are, will be very effective to the council. But I also do want to recognize the leadership of councillor Newt Joe for past few years and our relationship that worked very well. So I do appreciate your continued service and hope you will continue to serve with us.
Thank you, you're very welcome. Yeah, thank you and John are great for the job.
Thank you, I do. So that moves us to communication, invitations from council persons. Are there any councillors that would like to, councillor Lucy?
I think it's him.
I think it was a tie.
So I I just want to make, have an ask. I want for meeting schedules. I want to make it a priority that we do not schedule any special meetings or joint meetings on any evening that has other elected boards' regular scheduled meetings, especially if they end up having public hearings on those dates. I think the calendar is large enough that we can make sure we don't do that. I also want us to be cognizant of religious holidays, Christians, Jews, and Muslims. At the very least, we need to make sure that we are not scheduling any special meetings or regular meetings on those dates. And I probably should have checked to make sure we weren't, you know, when we approved the list, maybe we can make sure we're not doing that.
I think we tried, but.
Right, well, yeah. So that was, that's my request.
Thank you, councillor Lucy. Are there any other requests?
I would like to just say, according to Brenda's religious thing there, we always have a budget meeting on St. Patrick's Day. Every year, we have a budget meeting on St. Patrick's Day. And I am Irish, so, you know, I'm thinking we need to, your birthday is St. Patrick's Day? Dude, I didn't even know that. Why are we going to a budget meeting on Lou's birthday? It's your birthday too?
The budget meeting this year is scheduled on my birthday.
I I don't, I think, I I am going to voice for the Irish Americans in the room that, you know, I would like to have my St. Patrick's Day back, please.
I want Valentine's Day because I love everybody.
Okay, I guess that's, but, you know, sorry. And I just wanted to mention, uh, next weekend, I don't, actually, our meeting will be Tuesday, our virtual meeting, but the twenty-seventh is the kickoff for the Christmas parade. And the town is, the fire department is accepting floats from anybody. So if residents want to create a float or organizations or businesses want to create a float, we will have this year, we will have our our festival holiday parade kickoff. So that's on the twenty-seventh, but I'm mentioning it now so people can put in their application if they want to float. That's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, you know, first off, congratulations, everyone. I think that we have a great team here. I think that, you know, having worked with with many of you in the past and our two new members here, I think that it's gonna be awesome. I think that there's a lot that we can get accomplished. I'm looking forward to working with everyone here. On one issue, I know, I understand the the reasoning behind the raising the hands for the vote. But I think it's also something where for the for the vision impaired people that may be accessing online, just as if we can do a concurrent voice vote as well or something like that. Just, you know, and more for me, just because I like it, because it helps me understand what's going on as well. That's, you know, that's just, that's my only ask at this point.
No, I do, I do appreciate that. I think we could do a a hybrid option of raising your hand and signify by saying I simultaneously, so that it's both visual and verbal for individuals. It might also be beneficial when doing any any votes, maybe if we go towards roll call for future meetings, that each councillor identifies themselves, saying, calling me to check, I, councillor Lucy, I, so on and so forth.
That's awesome.
Yep, councillor Lucy.
Um, the Connecticut Council of Municipalities is having free training, January eighth, from nine to three PM for all newly elected officials. They go over budgets, they go over FOIA, they go over town meetings, they go over public hearings. So if, you know, you want to spend one day, nine to three, and get a free lunch out of it. And they do a breakfast too. You can go ahead and sign up at ccm dash dash ct.org. And that's not just for town council, that's for board of ed and anybody who's in a elected, newly elected position. I went four years ago when I found it very beneficial, it was very informative.
Thank you. Any other councillors? I was actually gonna bring up a couple of items I meant to bring up from the chairperson's report. One of them, I believe, the communication has been sent down and it's not been sent back regarding committee assignments. So please take a look at those, see which ones you are interested in. Additionally, I will keep it up in the air about the vetting for boards and commissions. I serve as councillor Luba, but I would be very much open if anyone was interested in taking on that position. It's something I'm not entirely, I certainly enjoyed it, but we work very well together, but I don't want to just automatically say, I, that's my thing, just because my name is on there. The second item of new councillors and new elected officials, I know in the past, there was a FOIA training. I don't know if there's any related FOIA training that we done through Zoom or hosted by the town, but that might be beneficial across all boards and commissions, as well as even newly appointed members of other boards and commissions.
Just to add on to that, that a friend of mine who I used to work with at the, in our pilot unit, that she was just one of the newly hired attorneys for the FOIA group, and she actually approached me about providing training. that she was just one of the newly hired attorneys for the FOIA group, and she actually approached me about providing training. So if that's something that we did wanna do, then, uh, I think she'd be outstanding in doing it, so.
No, I think that would be a lot. Any other requests for Councillor?
Would you be able to connect me?
No, 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 whatever. You're gonna have to find it on your own. Uh, no, definitely, I will, I will get, I will pass.
I'd appreciate it, because that was something I was looking into to try to get out of this communication, all that, once I could find somebody to do the training, or if there was an open training session.
I will, uh, I will provide you his contact information after I just toss her under the bus, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
One, um, to cover you, I want you to say, uh, Councillor Luba, I'm so excited to be working with all of you, and do you think they're a great group? Such, um, happy for Councillor Jones and Councillor Reagan to be Chair and Vice Chair. I just wanna ask if, Councillor, a particular question to a department, I would assume we would go through the Chair and Vice Chair, and that would go to our intern town manager?
Ideally, yeah, any, any questions, you know, to department chairs should go through the intern town manager directly. You can copy us if you would like, if you think it's in relation to potential business that the, the Chair and Vice Chair might decide upon for future council meetings, but, yeah, otherwise, if it's a general question, I, I direct it through Lisa to then forward it along and get a response back to you. All right. There's no other communications. Move on to item number twenty, public list of participation. Uh, any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. That's actually another, uh, side thing, is if anyone timer, I'm keeping it, uh, at this point, but, uh, take that into consideration along with committee assignments, if there's anyone that would like to post the timing function. Uh, with that being said, if you would like to speak, please signify by raising your hand, raise an icon on Zoom, star nine dot, you're on a phone, or if you are in the meeting chambers, which is a handful of people left, you can approach the table. With that being said, uh, seeing Sophia Johnson, followed by Steve, which I believe is Steve Lee Woods.
Thank you so very much, Sophia Johnson, forty-eight Crystal Lake Road. I just wanted to express my concern regarding, um, the item number on the agenda with regards to appointments to boards and commission. I see that Madhu Rendunchalala, did I say that correctly? Mr. Madhu? He, I, I don't know if it was, the action was approved for him to be added to the mental health task force, but I do wanna express my concern because based on his, um, the date, the, the purview that I have with regards to how he demonstrates himself on social media, I know personally, I've suffered a lot of, lot of stress from his way of perceiving me and how he has presented it to the public. And I know per, I know that, um, am I allowed to speak and express that, that I have a concern that he would be put as a permanent position on the mental health task force when the task force is completed and moving forward. I wouldn't even be comfortable, like I did, when I really.
Sophia, I apologize. We, we, we cannot have public comment that's denigrating other residents. Um, that's just not, not our format. Yeah, so that's just, sorry, I apologize that you were muted, but that's something that, you know, if you have a particular issue with a resident, that should be taken up personally. But with that being said, you know, I do appreciate concerns and comments that should be submitted to the town council to have them. But, but that being said, yeah, public participation should stay within the jurisdiction of the town and should not be a personal, potentially personal attack against another resident. Uh, with that being said, uh, Steve Lee Woods?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to welcome Sammy and Colleen to the town council, and welcome back all the returning council members. Um, in the last session, we enjoyed working with all of you regarding the miracle field. And Laurel and I are on tonight, just to keep, um, the momentum going, the, um, comments that we got that were very positive at the last meeting. We spoke about setting up a special meeting. Chairman, Vice Chairman Jones at the time, Chairman now, had mentioned that he would like to keep this moving forward and set the special meeting day prior to December, given that the project we've considered infrastructure and the schedule of when the capital improvement plan is presented to council. So, um, we were waiting for the new town council. We have the new town council, so we'd like to know if we could schedule the special meeting in November and, um, keep our momentum going.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Uh, we will definitely confer between myself and the Vice Chair and the Town Manager about the potential scheduling.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Rebecca Riesley?
Hi, thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Steve, I just wanna commend you on, on, um, how you're running the meeting. Um, I wanna congratulate everyone, um, who was elected to the board. Just extending my congratulations, but in particular, Steve, I'd like to commend you for how you're running the meeting tonight, uh, and how you handled the situation earlier, uh, in public participation. So thank you very much.
The public, uh, oh, you are still, Rebecca? There's any other public participation in the public? I'm seeing none. We move to item number twenty-one, I entertain a motion for German at eight thirty-eight PM.
Let's move all second. I mean, I'll move that.
That motion has been made by Councillor.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Ascension, that is unanimous, meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you for attending.